Welcome to the Tiverton Planning Board's public workshop to discuss the proposed zoning changes, particularly as they relate to the waterfront zone. Thank you all for taking the time to come out on a kind of icky Saturday. It's nice to see the interest. Just to give you a little bit of an overview about the plan for today, our consulting planner, Ashley Sweet, is going to do a very brief overview, and then we're going to open it up to questions and answers. At this point, the work product that has been produced is in the hands of the Town Council. The Tiverton Zoning Update Committee and the Tiverton Planning Board have worked for about eighteen months on zoning changes, of which this is one set. But the Planning Board and the Zoning Update Committee have voted to send these to the Tiverton Town Council. So any and all decisions that are to be made at this point will be made by the Town Council. We don't have the opportunity today, as the Planning Board, since we voted and moved this along, to change any recommendations. So we won't be voting today, but rest assured, your opportunity in terms of having anything changed will be on February 10th at the Town Council's public hearing. We are here today because we know that there is a lot of information there, there's a lot of misinformation out there, some of you may have received notices, and our goal today is to try and answer any and all of your questions as accurately as we can. So that's really our purpose, is to do a brief overview and then answer questions. So before we start with Ashley, I'm going to begin by taking attendance and introduce the Planning Board members. Mr. Gerlach.
Present.
Janice Combs.
Present.
Present.
Richard Taylor. Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Stuart Hardy.
Present.
BA Lopes.
Present.
And Chris Schreiber is absent.
And Steve.
And Steve Clark is also not present. Also with us today, we have Ashley Sweet, our consulting planner, Todd Romano, who is our land use legal consultant, and Ed Rotella, who is our land use clerk, who's here someplace. So if it's okay with you, we're going to go ahead and get started. I do want to mention one other thing. The Planning Board at its Tuesday night meeting, many of you have heard, there are several large applications for residential developments, comprehensive permit applications, one on Suzer Road, one at Friendship Farms off of Stafford Road. Those are not on our agenda today. So if somebody was here for that, we just wanted to let you know that those are not things that we'll be discussing today, but they will be heard, and the public will have an opportunity to participate at the Planning Board meeting on Tuesday night. So with that, I will turn it over to Ashley to do a very brief overview. Do we need to dim the lights at all, or can everybody see?
It's dim. So this is the same presentation that we gave to the Town Council at their workshop. Very quickly, Tricia already kind of covered the project overview in terms of why this work is being done. There is an amendment to the future land use map and zoning map that is part of this application, and then we will go through very quickly each of the zoning amendments. So as Tricia had mentioned, this is a two-part effort. There was some response to legislative amendments from the 2023 General Assembly. We had to update zoning and subdivision to be consistent with those changes, and then there is a zoning update in process that is part of an overview of the entire regulatory framework for zoning and subdivision in the town, which has not been done in a very long time. Both of these efforts are supported by the Planning Department and Legal Council. As part of this, there is a change to the future land use map and the zoning map. Your future land use map is a visual depiction of the community's desires for types, patterns, and intensities of development. It lives in your comprehensive plan. Your zoning has to be consistent with your future land use map, so when you amend one, you amend the other to keep those consistent with each other. Changes to Articles 1, 2, and 3 are mostly housekeeping issues. There's a provision that exempts the town from its own ordinance for government functions, which is very typical in a zoning ordinance. There are changes to definitions with updates to definitions which are coordinated with the changes to the use table. We've made clearer definitions, less interpretation, less guessing, and then we've also done a listing of the proposed new waterfront zones in this section of the ordinance, including descriptions of the Form-based codes that were previously living in an appended but separate document. So we're bringing all of this into one document. The change is in Article 4 to the district use regulations. This divides the waterfront zone into two zones, creating waterfront 1 and waterfront 2. We'll go over that in more detail. It adds the traditional Main Street pedestrian-friendly and the neighborhood businesses to the district use table. Again, that was a separate but appended document. Now it will all be in one place, and it adds, updates, and removes uses, making the table more modern than it is now. And it updates whether the use itself is permitted by right, requires a special use permit, or prohibited, and these are directly tied to performance standards and special use permit, specific and objective criteria. Article 5 is the dimensional table for the proposed new waterfront zones and those Form-based Code districts that were brought in. It clarifies existing language to allow for multiple principal uses on a single lot in the commercial zones. There's an entire section that addresses the definition of building height to bring that into conformance with state law. It includes some graphic representations to make it easy to understand. It has to do with height limits and the required CRMC elevation of structures in flood zones, making sure that those structures that are required to be elevated by CRMC do not exceed the height standard at 35 feet, and this ensures that the waterfront area is visually accessible to everyone and does not get walled off with structures. Articles 6 and 7 establishes performance standards for the permitted uses, some of which were permitted or previously were only allowed by special use permit. Excuse me. Prevents lots. There's a provision in there that prevents lots that became substandard with the passage of the R-120 zoning district from being merged due to being substandard in size, so it basically preserves those lots as individual lots. There's a section on special use permits. There was a passage of law at the General Assembly, and it essentially requires that all special use permits have specific and objective criteria, which is a difficult exercise to determine every circumstance under which you might want to put a requirement on a certain type of use. You know, previously, boards had a fair amount of latitude, and abutters had standing to object. That has been removed. All cases are basically treated the same. It's not context-sensitive anymore, so you can't necessarily look at the specific issues on a site. You're just, the use is treated the same no matter where it is, no matter what zone it's in, and that's really challenging to come up with all the circumstances for that. So that's taken certainly some time. So the approach that we took to this issue was to pause all special use permits until we could come up with all of those specific and objective criteria, and we've essentially taken, you know, made the choice to move away from special use permits. There used to be ninety different uses in the table that required a special use permit. Now there's only 21, and we've added a lot of performance standards to certain uses to essentially, you know, raise the level of quality that those uses have to adhere to instead of using a special use permit to achieve that because of the changes in the state law. On the waterfront zone, the purpose of doing this was certainly to diversify, you know, what's available in the waterfront zone, splitting it into two districts. This is supported in the town's comprehensive plan. There's a quote in the box on the right that essentially says that the town will look at exploring the possibility of splitting the waterfront zone to ensure a compatible mix of commercial and residential uses. So that's what we've attempted to do here, separating the uses based on intended future uses and splitting that zone into two different districts and adding appropriate commercial uses that were not currently permitted in the waterfront zone. So some important takeaways to remember when considering the changes in this waterfront zone. All of these lots still remain subject to CRMC and DEM regulation. All the development remains subject to the other general and zoning ordinances, so parking, lighting, noise, all of those standards and requirements would still apply. The waterfront zoning recommendations, as we said, include a new height limit ordinance, and this is to protect existing water views, as I said, making sure that the coastline is not walled off with very tall structures. This preserves values of existing residential property in the area, and that all the uses that are currently operating in the waterfront zone remain grandfathered. They're allowed to continue and to continue to do what they are doing today. These changes do not affect their legal operation. So there's currently eighteen commercial uses that were permitted in the waterfront zone. Seventeen of them required a special use permit. A church or a place of worship was the only exception, and that's not very business-friendly. The residential homes in the waterfront district are nonconforming, and it includes many residentially-used properties, but single-family and two-family and multifamily are not permitted uses currently in the waterfront zone, making those homes nonconforming. And there is no current height limit the way CRMC and, well, the way the state law regulates elevating structures in flood zones. We didn't have the correct language to protect those waterfront views, so we've added that. And again, the waterfront district was not really context-sensitive. As we know, the very far north end is very different from other portions of the waterfront district, and it was all lumped together as one, and it was not context-sensitive to the actual land uses and the surrounding land uses of those areas. So the proposed resolution was to split that zone, each of them having distinct use allowances, dimensional requirements, and standards that were more appropriately scaled to the actual, you know, physically what was happening on the ground, and to address the nonconforming status of residential properties wherever we could. It was not always possible, but every time it was, we took that opportunity. So we're going to go through each of these. It's broken into, I think it's six pieces. This is the far northwest corner. This is adjacent to the tank farm. This is a mid-to-higher intensity commercial use that's currently allowed. This area shown in blue is already zoned waterfront. We are not changing the footprint of this at all. We're not adding parcels or taking any parcels away. This is just becoming what is now known as waterfront 1. It will have 20 by right permitted commercial uses, and five will require special use permits, and it will be allowed to have a mix of service, retail, commercial, and marine-related uses, and there is an opportunity for mixed-use residential on upper floors. So the proposed waterfront 2 zone really is attempting to create areas of opportunity for commercial development with a minimal impact on the residential neighbors. The waterfront 2 zone has a lower-impact mix of uses when compared with waterfront 1. It moves seven existing nonconforming commercial lots from residential to waterfront 2, and it incorporates lots that are currently zoned general commercial in the Stonebridge and Bogomarsh areas to create a unified and simplified district in that area instead of having two different types of nonresidential zoning directly across the street from each other. In the waterfront 2, there are nineteen by right permitted uses and three uses that require special use permits, and there is the same option for mixed-use residential on the upper floor. And as we said, we tried to move existing residential into residential zoning so that they would not be nonconforming, and so we moved the existing cottage colonies from that waterfront designation to a residential zoning designation. These lots are fully developed as residential in a nonresidential zone. They have severe parking limitations and would be either problematic or impossible if they were to implement any type of commercial use there. The current residential use is nonconforming, and establishment in the residential zone helps to remedy those, you know, nonconforming use issues. So Area 1, the villages at Mount Hope Bay, this is, again, is currently zoned waterfront. There's no change to this footprint. It just moves this area into the waterfront 2 designation. Area 2 is the Hicks property. This is currently zoned R-30, and this is about 500 feet in from the water inland is proposed as W-2. This is Area 3 at the Secanet River Bridge. It's currently zoned waterfront. The map on the left is existing. The map on the right is the proposed. It's adding two commercial parcels that are currently residentially-zoned. It includes the former Chase Building and several other lots that are owned by DEM, and then the area in the purple box are the cottages that are moved over to residential. Area 4 is Riverside Drive. This is, again, currently zoned waterfront, includes the former Quality Yacht Yard and the Tiverton Yacht Club waterfront area. Again, these are cottages that are moved into residential. This is the area at Stonebridge. This is currently zoned waterfront on the west side and general commercial on the east side. There are currently different permitted uses directly across the street from each other, creating a bit of a mismatch in commercial zoning. So this will create one cohesive business area, providing an opportunity for village-style development and the ability to explore some additional parking options. Area 6 is Bogomarsh and Main. This is the smallest area. There are currently three commercially-used lots that are zoned residential. Those are shown in the red, and one commercial lot that's zoned general commercial, and one vacant lot that is zoned general commercial, and the commercial lots are, again, unified under a waterfront 2 zoning. And we don't need to worry about this.
Thank you, Ashley. I might, Ashley, will your computer reach up here? Please.
I think so, yeah.
So I might ask Ashley and Todd to come join us at the table, and we might need a little more lights so that they can see the audience. So we're going to open up now for questions. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, our work product has been sent to the council. The place to petition for a difference is at the council. Our goal is to try and answer any and all of your questions today. So I'm going to open it up for questions. There's a lot of people here today, and we want to get through all of them. So we'll ask that you keep your questions to three minutes if possible, and then that way we have an opportunity to give everybody a chance. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up.
Do you want the map? Do you want to ask?
Yes, please. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions. We'd ask, if you're going to ask a question, to please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and state your question. So I think Jamie French has her hand up, so.
Madam Chair, do you want me to?
Yes.
Be the official timer here?
That would be awesome.
Hi, my name is Jamie French, and I live on Craig Avenue. You keep talking about how the waterfront is going to be commercial, but your 93-page document indicates that it has a by-right industrial classification, that it will allow by-right manufacturing, starting processing, and fabrication. I notice that that is not mentioned in your description of the areas in your 93-page document. It's not defined. It's not, you yourself didn't mention it once on Monday's Town Council meeting. You didn't mention it once today. It has 10-foot setbacks. I don't think that the comp plan, Page 54, Action 3, when it says that there should be accessibility to the waterfront, it meant for there to be industry there. Also, there is a Mount Hope Bay waterfront buffer low-impact development, which is not being respected at all by having high-density commercial or industry in the area. Also, what's not mentioned in this 93-page document is the ward is the other changes to the plan, like traditional Main Street will now have zero setback dimensions on Main Road. Neighborhood business and pedestrian-friendly will have five-feet setbacks on Main Road. Why, we're not, that's not even being discussed, all the other changes in the plan. There are 93 pages of changes, and though we keep focusing in on how we're going to commercialize the waterfront, all the other changes are being ignored. Also, according to Rhode Island's General Law 45-22.2, it states that the zoning has to comply with the comp plan. In order to comply with the comp plan, you have to have comp plan meetings. Meetings have to be noticed. They have to have people input. The plan has to be then approved, and it has to be sent to the state for state approval. After that is done, then the town can change the zoning to comply with the comp plan. Seems to me that we're not following that regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. So there are a number of questions there. I'm going to try and answer a couple, and I'm going to rely on Todd and Ashley to answer a couple more. So first of all, as far as industrial goes, industrial isn't a use in our use table. It's a category of uses, but it's not a use in and of itself. So just because something's industrial doesn't mean it's allowed. There is one industrial use that is allowed in the waterfront, and that is manufacturing. However, it comes with a lot of restrictions. First of all, the town has a whole set of restrictions that govern manufacturing regardless of what zone they are. There's an entire section, and those cover things like noise, and odors, and vibration, and sound, and all kinds of other stuff. So there's already a set of protections to make sure that no manufacturing is going to be disruptive in the neighborhood. The second thing to remember is that in this particular zone, the manufacturing has to be marine-related. So you cannot come and manufacture some sort of hazardous chemicals or some sort of other odd stuff. It has to be marine-related. Finally, you have to look at the maximum building size. In waterfront 2, for example, the maximum building size is 20,000 square feet, or, I'm sorry, 10,000 square feet. That's less than the size of the CVS building, which is about 17,000 square feet. So we are not talking about allowing any kind of giant manufacturing facility. It's relatively small. Plus, there are requirements for how much lot coverage that you can have, what your setbacks are. Realistically, the only type of manufacturing that you are likely to see in the waterfront based on all of the restrictions and the fact that it's got to be marine-related is someone who is looking to do something that being, you know, that their manufacturing being on the water would be really helpful for them, like, you know, if somebody wants to open a sail loft and make sails, or if somebody wants to make, I don't know, custom windsurfing boards or something. That's the type of thing that you're most likely to see, and frankly, the most likely place for that is somewhere potentially in the future at one of the marinas. So you can have more than one commercial use on a property. If somebody develops a marina and wants to lease some space to somebody who wants to, again, make sails, they want to make custom boat covers, that's the type of manufacturing that when you take all the regulations together, that you are likely to see. We are not talking about manufacturing lithium batteries or batuminous, it's just not possible because all the other restrictions would prohibit that. And we feel pretty comfortable that, you know, a small marine-related manufacturer could fit in some places in the waterfront, but again, there are a great many restrictions that would prohibit it from being something that would be loud, obnoxious, too big, or intrusive in the neighborhood. The second question about low-impact development. Sometimes in zoning, there are phrases and words that are used in multiple ways and in multiple different meanings, and it's frustrating, and this is one of those things. So while I'm speaking, Ashley, can you pull up the DEM Low-Impact Development Manual so it's on the screen? DEM has a low-impact development program, and it is not about the uses. If you read the manual, and there's, Ashley's going to pull it up, there's an entire manual that goes with this thing. There is not a single mention in the manual about uses. It doesn't have anything to do with the uses in the zone. It has everything to do with protecting ground and surface water, meaning minimizing runoff, minimizing contaminants that come from a property, minimizing the untreated water going directly into storm drains or going directly into the river. If you read through the manual, and Ashley can page through so that you can see it, it's a whole set of development techniques that cover things like having things like rain gardens and how you position sidewalks so that stormwater doesn't end up in the road. It's got a whole section on how you site buildings and how you place things and how you use the topography. So low-impact development, as required by DEM, and the fact that DEM is promoting a low-impact development program for Mount Hope Bay, doesn't say one single word about the uses or having commercial uses or not having commercial uses, and it says everything about how you design a property and how you manage the stormwater on that property. So Ashley, you can show, they'll show you, there's lots of pictures in here, there's lots of descriptions of how you do this, but there's nothing in there, nor is there anything in DEM's Mount Hope Low-Impact Development about restricting any particular uses. To make this even a little more complicated for everybody, so you can, so, you know, you can see pictures. It talks about streams, sidewalks, parking areas, impervious parking, rain gardens, all that stuff. So we are in compliance with that. First of all, the town has adopted the DEM's Low-Impact Development Manual. It's part of our subdivision regulation. So when we evaluate a project, it gets evaluated against those regulations. Secondly, if your project involves an acre or more, you have to go to DEM for your stormwater management plan, and they will force you to implement these low-impact design techniques. So they ultimately, DEM ultimately approves all of them. Ashley, could you pull up the, if you go CRMC-type waters map for Tiverton? Ashley, could you pull up the, if you go CRMC type waters map for Tiverton? Just to clarify all of this, too, control of the waters, the actual waters in the state, belongs to the Rhode Island Coastal Resources Management Commission, CRMC. Anybody who owns a property on the water knows that if you're going to do anything with it, you're going to have to get CRMC permission. CRMC essentially designates the uses along, that are directly abutting the waterfront. So, there's a Tiverton map, if you go down to Tiverton, and they have looked at all the waters in the state and have essentially decided what you can put where in terms of, if you're right on the water, the kinds of uses that are there. So, if you look at CRMC's designation for Tiverton, the 127 purple area, which goes roughly from, about from the boathouse north, CRMC has designated that as Type 6 Industrial and Commercial Navigation Waters. That's what CRMC designates that. A little bit further south, which is basically, you know, the Tiverton Harbor and the Tiverton Basin area, they have designated that as recreational and commercial harbors. And then, finally, if you go a little bit...
I have to switch the map.
Oh, sorry.
Oops. No, I don't.
You just have to scroll a little. So, the section where it's 109, which you can see, you know, goes from a little bit north of the Secana River Bridge, all the way down to Grinnell's Beach, is designated for high-intensity boating. So, CRMC has designated waters for these kinds of uses. So, I don't know if that clarifies things, or makes it more confusing, but we are, this proposed zoning and our existing subdivision regulations are fully in compliance with DEM's low-impact development requirements. Because again, that's not about the uses, it's about all the design techniques that you use on a property to minimize stormwater runoff directly into a pond, into the, into the street drains, or into the river. I'm going to get, let Ashley talk a little bit about the setbacks on Main Road that Jamie asked about.
I can do that.
Or, can you do that?
I can do that. The setbacks are not changing significantly. In fact, the setbacks in the Form-Based Code Zones, as they're previously known, the neighborhood business, traditional Main Street, pedestrian-friendly, are mostly remaining the same. They appear as underlined in our proposal because they're being moved from the Form-Based Code document to the actual zoning ordinance document. There are some small changes. I agree, I see Ms. French shaking her head, but they're not significant. For example, we're changing lot area size in the neighborhood business and pedestrian-friendly zone from 15,000 to 12,000 square feet. We're changing lot width from 100 feet to 75 feet in the pedestrian-friendly zone. In the, in the neighborhood business zone, we're changing the frontage, the front yard requirement from 25 feet to 10 feet. My point is, these changes are significant, but more importantly, for residences in any of those three zones, the dimensional regulations of the nearest residential district shall still apply. It's not going to affect residences. This is to increase business activity, to increase foot traffic to these businesses, which is something that this board had discussed and wanted to promote.
And finally, there was a question about required meetings to change the comprehensive permit. Ashley or Todd, would you like to comment?
Yeah, so, there are requirements when you make changes to a comprehensive plan. You're allowed to amend your comprehensive plan four times a year, and when you do that, the minimum requirement is that the planning board hold a public hearing, the town council hold a public hearing, that it's properly advertised, and people are properly notified. We have done all of those things, there is, there are no other requirements, but the planning board has gone above and beyond and has held multiple workshops. We're having this workshop, we had a workshop in front of the town council. So, the planning board and the town in general have gone above and beyond the minimum requirements for notifying the public of changing the comprehensive plan and/or changing the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. The last thing I'd like to address is the comment regarding whether or not we're trying to, whether or not we're trying to not disclose things in our presentations or our slide presentations. So, this is a lot of zoning change, and we understand that. It was never our plan. Originally, we had a plan to update Tiverton zoning code, which is old, it's out of date, it's complicated, it contradicts each other in lots of places. It's, you know, sort of 20 years of benign neglect, just because we never really had the money or the funding to do it. So, we dove into this project, and in the middle of this, the Rhode Island General Assembly decided to change massive amounts of zoning laws. So, now we are forced to deal with two things at one time, that we never would have taken on at one time, which is the update to the zoning code, plus to change, make all the required changes that the state is now requiring, and many of those are, the state requirements are super complicated and took a lot of time and effort to work through. So, it's a lot of stuff. Admittedly, the document is long, but as far as not mentioning the fact that we're allowing very limited, you know, marine-related manufacturing, that's not intentional, but you can imagine, it is very difficult to take 93 pages of document and put it into a slide presentation. I don't think any of you would want to sit through a slide that covered every single item in that document. There's certainly no intention to hide anything from anybody. So, if we haven't answered your question about low-impact development, or anything we've done, feel free to ask it again, or rephrase it, or say, "I don't understand anything." We really want people to leave here today feeling like they got a good explanation. So, if we didn't, you're welcome to. More questions? Come on up.
Promise to keep this one quick and simple. My name is Hannah Maderas, and I have a question just regarding the logistics for someone like myself. So, I've been waiting to open a business in the Stonebridge area that has not previously been allowed within the zoning. It is personal services. So, let's say that on Monday, February 10th, all of this goes according to plan, it passes. I've been waiting for a while. So, if I show up here on Tuesday, the 11th, the Building Department, which John Hoyle, I don't know if someone's replaced him yet, but I need a certificate of compliance for the Rhode Island Health Department. Is that going to be, like, easy? Will I be able to do that, like, has someone replaced him for businesses trying to open?
So, assuming the town council accepts our proposals, the ordinance, as it's presented, proposes that those changes shall be effective immediately.
Okay.
However, there's still an appeal period that's available to anyone that may want to challenge any of those provisions.
How long does that last?
I believe it's 20, a 30-day appeal period.
Okay. So, 30 days after the 10th is logistically when I would show up at the Building Department, unless somebody has appealed it.
Assuming that the town council approves...
Yeah, no, I know, I understand that.
All right.
Okay.
Theoretically.
I mean, theory, and, and it does become effective on passage. It, it doesn't mean you would have to wait the 30 days.
Yeah, I don't want to wait anymore.
I mean, if you, if you were incredibly cautious person and worried about that, maybe, but, you know, in theory, you could go in the next morning, it's effective on passage.
Yeah, because I've, it's, yeah, it's been six months of paying rent at a place that I can't use, you know, and it's, it's been tough for someone, so, like myself. Thank you.
I might suggest that you attend the council hearing and...
Oh, I am, I've been to a few, so, I'll be at that one as well.
Okay.
The 10th, you mean, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's been on my calendar. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Stephen Hughes, 225 W. Simmer Drive, but I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors of the Tivity Yacht Club. First of all, I want to start by thanking you for your time and effort. I'm somewhat aware of what goes on behind the planning board walls and the work that takes to be done to do what you do. So, I guess after listening to Mrs. Hilton's introductory speech on where this stands right now at the Tivity Town Council, we just have a couple of questions related to the yacht club, not the marina side, but the yacht club on Riverside Drive. And looking at the letter that was sent to the town council from the planning board, just one of the sentences says, "Both the removal and addition of these lots better reflect the current use and how these lots could be put to their highest and best use in the future, given the proximity to the water." We've been where we are right now for 70 years on Riverside Drive, and seeing as you've reached across Riverside Drive and Main Road, and many of the instances where the changes to W-2 is coming, I guess our question is why the Tivity Yacht Club wasn't considered to be put into Waterfront 2.
I'm going to, I'm going to let Ashley speak to that in general, in general. We were, part of our, our mission was not just to look at the waterfront as an unused asset, where we could generate more commercial property tax, but also, at the same time, to protect the residential areas and uses that existed there. In other words, to minimize conflict. So, in making these decisions, they were a little bit of both. I'm going to ask Ashley to answer that from a planning perspective.
Sure. So, the way we did this was to kind of start at the top and work our way through the waterfront district, and, you know, in places where we could work with things that were non-conforming and made them conforming, we certainly wanted to do that. But there are circumstances that don't lend themselves to doing that, and you can see that the property is highlighted in yellow. There is a thing that's called spot zoning, and that's when you take a general area that is zoned a certain way, and you, and you isolate one parcel, or maybe two parcels, and you designate them with a different zoning than what is surrounding them. And spot zoning is something we try to stay away from. It's about, you know, working with zoning as a balancing act. Yes, we want to make people conforming when we can, but we also need to be cognizant of a lot of other issues when we do that. Spot zoning is one of them. Residential, you know, abutting properties is one of them. The other piece of it that we spent a lot of time talking about is that although there might be a certain use on a property now that doesn't conform with the zoning, if we zone for what's going on there currently, we open that property up to all the allowances within that district. So, while you're, it's a non-conforming use on the property, if we zone that parcel as waterfront, it essentially becomes available for all the uses in that district. And the reason for doing it would be to make one use consistent, and the repercussion of that is making 20 uses available, when really, just the one use that's there now is the non-conforming use. So, again, it's a balancing act. We look at a bunch of different factors when we make decisions about what makes sense to make a non-conforming use conforming. If there are no, none of those other issues, then it will work, but if there are other, you know, related issues, like similar to the ones that we just went through, then we have to make that decision, looking into the future, not just looking presently at what's going on there currently. So, choices were made, you know, considering all of those factors, and we did go section by section and have particular discussions about where things made sense, and where there might be some unintended consequences if we did change zoning simply for the purpose of making something that was non-conforming conforming.
Well, you were making changes to make the use along waterfront, waterfront, that was your plan, so that makes sense. I noticed that several properties are, you could be called spot zoning, what you've done. In all cases, everything along that edge of that blue line, the people across the street might be facing a different use. You know, there's, there's commercial uses in the waterfront zone, but across the street residential. So, that applies everywhere, not just in our lot. Now, we've been a yacht club for 80 years, we haven't changed our function for 80 years, and we're doing great, I suspect we'll keep doing it for another 80 years. We are legal non-conforming use, so people say, "Oh, you're fine, you're legal non-conforming, you're all set." Well, I can tell you, legal non-conforming opens itself to all kinds of mischief, and 20 years ago, just about shut down the yacht club. We're legal non-conforming legally on our building side, we can do absolutely nothing that supports the marina. Nothing. That's the law.
Well, that was a court decision. It's the law, but it was, it was a decision that was rendered by, in court.
Right, because someone said, "It's the law," and the court said, "Oh, you're right, that is the law, you can't do that." So, this, you know, it's right now, we're living under it, but as I look at the map, all the areas, you know, make sense, and you're saying, "Well, you know, yacht club, that sounds like a waterfront use." And you're saying, "Well, not so fast, maybe it's not." And I think...
Well, I don't think that's what we said at all. I think we...
Well, you can move us into waterfront, which...
But we just, the explanation that was given was that to make a change, to make a conforming, a non-conforming use conforming, is not the only factor that we look at when we're talking about rezoning properties. So, that, that's, that's not the only consideration. Nobody said that, that a yacht club is not a waterfront use, but the discussion was, you know, much bigger than making a non-conforming use a conforming use.
Well, why are we any different than the lot across from the boat ramp, a lot across from the bait shop, all the lots down in South Tiverton, Don's Marine, those lots of water, White Wine Plaza, all of those are residential, all of a sudden, they were non-conforming, I suppose, and now all of a sudden, they are commercial.
Well, because again, we looked at the context of what surrounded them. You are surrounded by residential lots, correct?
Well, so are they. They are, they're in a residential zone, not even further south, they were in a residential zone.
They were in a residential zone.
And now, all of a sudden, they are in a commercial zone, surrounded by residential, that sounds like spot zoning. I'm not objecting to it, I think it's fine, I think it should be the way you did it. I think absolutely Don's Marine should be waterfront use, absolutely great.
There are no other parcels in your neighborhood, in your area, right? Where you are, there are no other parcels that are commercial on the other side of the street?
Further up there are, well, there are now.
Further up, but not in the area that you're in. So, keep this in mind, and this is what we have to think about, right? You are surrounded by residential property, and, and your lot is relatively small, I mean, it's not teeny-tiny, but it's not a big lot. So, to Ashley's point, when we rezone something, that would mean on your, and I know the yacht club has been there forever, and I know a lot of the members of the yacht club and think highly, and I know that the board right now is made up a lot of, a lot of great people who love Tiverton. But once that becomes commercial, if something were to change in the future, that lot would be able to have any single one of the commercial uses that's allowed in the table. The yacht club might fit perfectly, but many of those other uses may not, number one. Number two, and Board of Directors change over time, that's just a fact. In an effort to be more friendly, we've changed the regulations now to say that, for sure, you can have multiple commercial uses on a property. So, if some future Board of Directors decides, "Listen, we don't need all this space, we can open this up to more businesses, we can rent part of our clubhouse facility, we can do this," you could end up with multiple commercial uses on that property. You know, to Ashley's point, we have to look in context of not just what's here today, and that's one of the mistakes people often make, and there are examples of it all over Tiverton, where once upon a time, somebody changed the zoning of something based on what was there at the time, and 20 years later, we're thinking, "How did that ever happen?" Because look what's here now. So, again, you, you have every right and opportunity to go in front of the council and to make your case, and we understand that, and we, you know, suggest that you do it. But, you know, we spent a lot of time thinking about all these individual parcels, and what was there today, but what could happen in the future, and whether or not changing one of those parcels to waterfront commercial long-term, with the other 20 uses in that use table work on that parcel? And if it did, then we could change it. But if we looked at it and said, "The other 20 uses, you know, in the future might not work there," then we didn't. But again, you are welcome to...
You know, although they're not, they're not individual lots, there, I think it was seven residential properties that were brought into the W-2 zone behind the bank, behind Cumberland Farms, behind the medical building, that the same...
behind Cumberland Farms, behind the medical building, that the same thing could be said. Any one of, any one of those could be changed to a restaurant or any of the other uses that are allowed.
Right. But remember, they're already zoned general commercial. They are zoned, they're not zoned residential. Those are lots that are already zoned general commercial. And so, today, they could be redeveloped as general commercial lots. Those are lots that were already zoned general commercial.
Some are residential.
No, they're, they're all zoned, every one of those that's being brought in, at least, either the full lot was zoned general commercial, or a significant, most of it was zoned, it was a split zone, and most of it was zoned general commercial. We actually took some residential lots that had a teeny tiny corner, unusable portion of general commercial in those zones, and moved them back into residential.
To the north of us, so, I wouldn't call us spot zoning. We're surrounded on three sides by residential, but on the fourth side, it's waterfront. To the north of us is a Marina owned by, who wants to know?
Safe Harbor.
Safe Harbor. Safe Harbor, and I know that Safe Harbor has huge plans for that area. They haven't done anything yet, but that's gonna be quite intensive, and I wouldn't be surprised if the people across the street are gonna be looking to sell out to Safe Harbors for their continued use. So, it's not as if we're in the middle of a really, just low-key, you know, quiet neighborhood. We're right on the waterfront.
Separation.
It's just a comment.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes. Again, keeping in mind that we're not voting on, we're not voting in on anything today.
I'm Peter Core, Eagleville Road. In the yacht club, our bylaws prohibit us from doing anything else than being what we are for the last 70 years. We're not gonna change ourselves and become any commercial entity. We can't.
I understand that you have a set of bylaws, but, you know, entities can change over time, entities disband. Again, you know, that's a, you know, we have to think about what the, we have to think about what the law of unintended consequences are when we change, when we change zoning, and it might not be today or tomorrow, but in five or seven years, it could be different. I know you do, Peter. You were on the, on the planning board for a long time, so, thank you. More Mr. Use? Thank you. Yes, come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Ethan Smith, Captain Circle. I had a question about affordable housing in town with the proposals coming up on Tuesday. Where is Tiverton in regards to meeting affordable housing? And if we're not there, can the state, does it have the right to override town zoning so that way we do meet affordable housing?
Okay, so, this is not on the agenda, but I'm gonna answer this really quickly, okay? But you should know, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the planning board is having a meeting, and those two proposals are, be in front of us, and we'll be having long discussions about this.
Are they both affordable housing, or just one?
Both of them come, are affordable housing developments. So, where are...
25% of the housing proposals.
Yes, 25% of each. So, where are we? There are two answers to that. One is, according to the state, we're at like 4.62%, but they only measure it once a year. And since then, we've had additions. That doesn't include things that we've approved but haven't been built yet, because the state won't count those.
Like Fish Road, right? That's not included yet.
Exactly. They do not count until they have a certificate of occupancy, and people are living in them. But we do have a project going on in terms of including a lot of units that now qualify to be counted that weren't before. We have, the town administrator's working on that. So, the official number is a little under five. I think the real number is closer to five and a half, so that's kind of where we are.
Still nowhere near 10%.
It's nowhere near.
State requires 10, is that correct?
The state requires 10. But we are not an outlier. There are many communities that are much lower than we are, so, you know, we're working on this. But to answer your question, the state and the General Assembly and the governor have determined that the state's need for affordable housing essentially outstrips a community's ability to manage its own zoning. That's what's happened. So, developers who are proposing a minimum of 25% of affordable housing are allowed to come into town and propose a housing development, even if it's not allowed in the zone, and even if the densities are extremely large. And there's a chart that goes with this, but essentially, depending on, depending on how much affordable housing you are offering, and at what level of affordable housing, because there's different levels of this that you're offering, there is now a state-mandated density bonus calculation method, where in return for building this 25% of affordable housing, these for-profit developers then get, not only that, but they get these massive density bonuses of additional uses to build. So, so, this is a, this is a state-mandated program. It was, it's been in existence for a long time, but up until two years ago, municipalities had a little more leeway in terms of managing these things. In the '23 General Assembly session, ineffective at the beginning of '24, a great deal of a municipality's ability to manage its own zoning when it comes to these was stripped away from the, from the communities. So, it's a tough situation.
So, if the town were to turn these down, could they then go and override with the state?
We're not gonna talk about any particular projects right now.
No, no particular project. Just if any project comes in front of the planning board...
So, let me say it like this. Every project has a certain set of criteria it has to satisfy. This board is allowed to question every project and hold it to its, to the fire.
Right. And in doing so, if you determine that it's not meeting zoning requirements, that developer could then go to the state or could not go to the state?
Their appeal is to the Superior Court.
Superior Court. That's where they would go next.
And I will add to it that when you file an application under the state law, which is called a comprehensive permit, the standards by which the planning board makes a decision are different than when they make a decision on a conventional application.
Okay.
The state has essentially raised the bar for municipalities to be able to say no to something. So, it's becoming harder to meet those criteria, because the state keeps, I will say, the state raises the bar for the town and lowers the threshold for the developer.
Okay.
So, it's two different types of findings and determinations that are made.
So, just to educate myself on this too, because I'm not too familiar with it, is it...
We're way off our agenda, so I don't have to cut this off pretty soon.
Quick question. So, trailer park-type situations, does that count as affordable housing in Rhode Island now?
The simple answer is it could.
So, we are actually in the process, without having to de-restrict them or something, there is an opportunity for a municipality, if certain of those manufactured units meet certain criteria, you can get a half a unit credit for them. So, we are in the process, the town administrator is actually working on that.
So, that's not currently included in the 5% that the town is at right now?
In the 4, in the 4.2.
If you have other questions, you can get in touch with me.
All right, thanks.
So, we are a bit off on topic, but again...
Just curious, trying to educate myself before Tuesday, so I kinda know.
And if it was on the agenda, we could talk about this for hours, but, but at our Tuesday planning board meeting, both of these will be presented, so...
Which is at 6:30 here at Town Hall.
Right.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Counselor Comito?
Correct, Comito, 204 Saxon you have in, part of the town council. Just a couple of questions, and it kind of refers back to the way you were zoning the yacht club. The parcel of Bogomash and Main that is general commercial now, that you want to put into the waterfront? What is the determining, or is that like a spot zoning also? Or how did we determine to put that in the waterfront, too?
Well, those parcels are already zoned general commercial.
Right.
And there's a pretty significant overlap between waterfront and general commercial, but one of the things that you'll be seeing coming, because we're not done with this rezoning, is that we're adding some uses to general commercial. We don't have enough general commercial zone as it is in town. It's a, we don't have much of it left, so we are looking to expand it a little bit, and we are looking to expand those uses. We're trying to create a waterfront zone that goes from the state line down, you know, to Bogomash, that has some consistency to it, and not end up with uses, once, if we adjust general commercial, that might not fit down there, right? Because we're gonna add some uses to general commercial that, you know, or recommend some that aren't there today, in an effort to have more space for, for general commercial uses. So, it just makes sense to have a unified business zone. It's easier for everybody. I mean, one of the problems, for example, with Main Road right now, and even the waterfront, is, oh, well, you can have it on that side of the street. Oh, the other side of the street, nope, you can't have it. You can have this here, but if you go 150 feet up the street on Main Road, you can't have it there. But if you go another 30 feet up the road, it, it's not helpful for somebody who wants to open a business and to have a sort of cohesive, collective, commercial zone that makes, you know, that makes a lot of sense, and where everybody's comfortable that the, that the uses are compatible with each other, that, you know, somebody who wants to open a restaurant might not want to have an auto body dealership open next door, right? If they want to have an outdoor patio, they might be like, you know, "I want to be next to something that is gonna fit with what I'm doing," right? So, that was really the, that was really the decision.
So, if that lot was to remain general commercial, we would have other controls, correct, through our use tables, and if I'm understanding this correctly, like dimension size, parking, other controls to keep that small, limited, or like...
Can I, can I just, I think, higher level, the intent of doing this with the waterfront two and changing these general commercial parcels was to, and there was a discussion about general commercial and like what's appropriate there, and the fact that we don't have a lot of it, and it's kind of scattered around. So, the idea was to take the general commercial that was happening on either side of Main Road and to use the waterfront zoning for that location, because it's waterfront-adjacent. It makes sense to keep everything together, and then to, at the next pass, look at general commercial and look at where it's happening, look at what those uses are, and potentially expand on them and use them in other locations of town. General commercial was used on the waterfront down here, because waterfront one wasn't appropriate. It was too industrialized, and we couldn't use it in this area. So, the waterfront two is something that is much less intense than waterfront one, and is very, like, we think is very appropriate adjacent to the waterfront. We don't need the general commercial there anymore. The waterfront two is essentially taking its place. We'll use that general commercial in other, in other locations of town, where it's more appropriate. And you'll have the same control in the two districts. All the districts have uses that are allowed, not allowed by special use permit and dimensional standards.
So, just so you read, I am all for trying to get this waterfront developed and straightened out. I'm not totally against the waterfront, too. But that statement that you just said, kind of runs me the wrong way, that we don't need general commercial in that area, but the person who owns the property might need general commercial in that area to either maintain his full investment or whatever, you know? So, that statement is kind of tough. The other question I have...
No, can we just address that for one?
Sure.
Go ahead.
No, you go first.
If there's an existing commercial use there, that remains as a non-conforming use.
Okay.
And I think, as Ashley was trying, if you can scroll out...
The way it's being explained is like that's gonna go away.
No, no, it remains. It remains.
No, that's it, go away.
Okay.
And any...
That's why I'm here asking questions.
And let me make it clear, there are, I'll call them general commercial uses in the waterfront two zone. If you look at the district use table, there are uses that are allowed in both zones.
There's an overlap between what's permitted in general commercial and what's permitted in the waterfront, too. So, it's not like someone in general commercial now, like, loses all their uses and gets a whole new set. That doesn't happen. There's quite a bit of overlap.
Eventually, lot coverage is huge.
So, so, I know Mr. Lex, so, so, there's a lot of overlap. Your question about we would have the same control, you would have the same control, except that, to be honest, the use tables are different, right? So, in general commercial, there may be some uses, I don't believe there are any of the uses that exist there today, but there might be some uses that are gonna be more intensive than what's in, like, maybe an auto, maybe an auto dealership, right? That might be a general commercial thing, but not so much a waterfront. And yes, there, there are in the waterfront, because, because the lots are smaller, and because of their location, and a little bit to low-impact development, right? Again, back to that, trying to, trying to manage stormwater and not create, you know, pollution and runoff. There, the amount of lot coverage you can have, in other words, the amount of stuff that you can build on a lot is less, and the setbacks are a little bit different, and that is true.
That's what we talked about earlier, the setbacks, correct?
Right.
But that was for residential. Different zone and stuff.
Different zone, but, but, so, so, yes, in the waterfront, the amount of lot that you can put stuff on is less. But here's the thing to remember, and, and I hope that, I would hope, and as a member of the planning board, and hopefully, future planning boards, there are some lots in the waterfront that are bigger, that can handle more, right? And we know that. So, one of the changes, one of the few good changes, I think, that came out of the General Assembly, is it used to be that you went to the planning board to get your plan approved, but then if you needed dimensional relief, you had to do a whole nother thing. You'd go to the zoning board, and the butters notified, and the whole nine yards. Now, there's this thing called Unified Development Review, which means when you come to the planning board, it's a one-stop shop, right? You get it all there. The planning board understands that there are lots that could have more lot coverage, right? Especially one that is across the street, that's not right on the water, and has the ability to grant relief. I know it's not a perfect solution, but it does exist. So, if somebody comes to the planning board with a proposal for something that really makes a lot of sense, and environmentally, it's going to be fine, but they need to use more of their lot than what's allowed, or they need, they need a setback, and it's not gonna impinge on a neighboring residential property, you know, that can be, that can be granted. It's not the same as having it by right, I understand that, but the tools for somebody to do something a little bit different do exist.
It's still there in the lot, the tools.
The uses are still allowed, there are still tools there. And let me address one very important point about dimensions. The, one good thing this General Assembly did do is say, substandard lots get proportional dimensional relief.
Automatically.
Automatically, meaning if you have a substandard lot, a lot that's too small by the zoning requirements, you automatically get a proportional reduction in lot coverage, in setbacks. Yeah, that's about it. But that's very important. You wouldn't have to come to any board.
Okay.
One other point, Mr. Comito, if I can. And Ashley, can you just scroll up a little bit more on your map? To Ashley's point about the cohesiveness in the town, if you look along the waterfront, there are only two zones that are, that have general commercial. One, what is this?
That's Grinnell's Beach.
Grinnell's Beach, and then down, those three lots that you were talking about, those are the only general commercial zoned lots along Main Road. So, that 500,000 aerial view, when we change those to waterfront, they then become cohesive, which is the goal of planning, long-term planning.
Okay, and that's, and Counselor Perry just asked, wants me to ask follow-up question. And that's for the businesses that are now, that's for nothing new, right? So, all the existing general commercial on that, like that piece of property is...
Is grandfathered forever. For, for as long as it does that, it's grandfathered.
All right. So, I just have two more questions. So, in our packet, I did receive the emails about the use, permitted use tables and the stuff that changed. Seems pretty extensive. So, not all of this, not in this package, all these changes, not all of them pertain to waterfront, right?
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of other changes in here that, okay. So, I don't agree with some of the changes. So, my next question is, I'm pretty sure there's a deadline that needs to be met? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Like the 24th?
On the, the end of February.
Okay.
All of those uses, which were previously marked as special use before January 1st, 2024...
Right.
Are going to revert back to special use permit unless we do something now.
Okay. Is there a way for an extension or anything like that with this date that can be filed, or is that a major process? Or, I just think, for me personally, to get all this information and to try to digest it in two weeks... it in two weeks, when your great work has been months and probably longer than that, I would assume, it's going to be difficult for me to try to understand this within two weeks, trying to beat a deadline.
Let me answer it like this. There's no state deadline.
Okay.
It's a self-imposed deadline by the town. However, the town itself has extended those deadlines multiple times already. And we know that there are people waiting for these changes to come about-
Exactly.
-so they can start their own development. If there's a specific area that you want to talk to me about, Counselor, we will certainly do that. Ashley and I will sit down with you individually if you want.
Yeah.
It was my understanding though that, and I know actually for a fact, that when a planning board approved these in the future land use map, I believe it was November 12th, almost the next day or that week at least, I had those changes to the town, to the town clerk. And I thought those were distributed about that time, so I hope you would have had them.
I just received this, this past council meeting, all this information.
Okay.
So I don't know if it had to do with the change in council or whatever, but I mean, I'm going on just a couple of weeks. And I started inquiring before I took, you know, I've had conversations with Ms. Hilton and, and I'm just trying to understand it, gather it all, and like I said, two weeks is, it's kind of tough to understand all of this.
So Counselor Cimino, I think I mentioned earlier, one of the things that happened in this tsunami of work, right, is that we're in the middle of this zoning change and the general assembly changes all this special use permit stuff. And it's like, and we're not the only town that's like, oh, this is so much work, we don't even know what to do with ourselves. So I will tell you that there are some zones with these special use permits that we've actually been through, right? And we've got a pretty good, so what we're proposing to you, we're pretty sure of. There are some zones where we're like, we're good with these as S's, these, and I'm just being honest, and it's based on the workload. Some of these are still N's because we're just not like sure we've like got it done all the way through, so the safest thing was to leave it an N till we get to it. But we haven't, I'm being honest, we haven't gotten to the special use permits in any of the residential zones yet. We haven't gotten to them in any of the watershed overlay district yet, and we haven't gotten to them really in the, in the village commercial yet. Just because we're working as hard as we can, as fast as we can, but this is a massive amount of work. So there are some things that right now are sitting there. They used to be S's, now they're N's, and it's only because we just haven't been able to get to. Because every one of these things, you have to think through every possible permutation of what could happen as a special use permit, right? So you end up with things like the crematorium or whatever, and, and we're just swamped. I, I know that there are people who are waiting for things, but as a counselor, as a council, you know, I would say for the waterfront and for Main Road, we're pretty comfortable with what we're proposing. In the other zones, if you guys said, we want to extend this, I mean, Todd will have a-
Well, that was going to be my next, is that an option?
It's an option for the council. If the council wants to do that, that is perfectly in your peruse.
So reading through some of this stuff, and I'll just, something that stuck out in my head, a quick example, Tivonin, it's almost like a farm community. We do have a lot of people with horses.
Yeah.
But so as I read this-
Right.
Somebody can't have a stable on their property, or somebody can't, right?
So that's a really-
I'm worried about voting something through and I'm taking land away from the people.
Right.
Because it says no, you can't, not permitted.
So really good example, right? And on Tuesday night, Animal Control Officer Victoria Sartini is coming to the planning board meeting. Why? Because as animal control officer, she has a set of things around livestock that needs to get addressed. We know this needs to get addressed, and our plan was, hey, let's work together here, right? You have your suggestions and ideas, and we need to work with the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. I'm being perfectly honest, we just haven't gotten to it yet. We're starting it on Tuesday.
Right.
We're just, you know-
I would feel better if this could be separated with all the other uses as opposed to the waterfront.
I think the solution, Counselor, not to cut you off, is to identify specific uses, for example.
We're in the process of doing that as a, our president put out an email to us with our ideas and our thoughts to present back to you on what we think should be removed or whatever. We're in the process, but I'm concerned about your deadline and I'm just trying to be open and-
That deadline, I want to just finish my thought on that. It's self-imposed, but it's been extended multiple times already.
Right.
And at some point, somebody's going to call us out on this, some developer, saying, you got to do something.
Right.
Taking my property. So this is the first step to getting there.
Okay.
And as Council President, Council President Edwards told you on last Monday night, you can tell the, the planning board you want more done, or you want something changed, and you have the opportunity to change what's, if you were to approve this, you have the opportunity to change it later on.
And I think that's an important point, is that the, the work that the zoning revision committee and that the planning board is doing is, this is, like, this is the, the first kind of set of it. There's, we're, we're going to continue working, so if there, there's going to be time for you to kind of dig in a little bit more and get yourself up to speed and kind of participate as we're going instead of trying to like, you know, run to catch up. And if you find that something that was passed, you know, this time, still doesn't sit right with you or needs to be further addressed, that we're going, we're continuing, this is not the end. We're going to continue this, so there is opportunity for these things to keep evolving.
Which, which I think is great, because I think a lot of people are looking at this document throughout the town and like, oh my God, the world's stopping, we're not building, we're not, we're trying to stop everything, you know? And I think that's an important factor. I don't think we're really trying to do that.
No, quite the opposite, actually. The idea is to, is to, is to, you know, to generate more business, to give people more opportunity and to be able to take a close look at the compatibility of uses and are, are the dimensional requirements reasonable? You know, are we being too limiting? Like, that's why some of those Main Road dimensional requirements were, were pulled back to make it easier for businesses to locate and operate. And that is really, that is one of the main focuses of this effort, and, and I don't want that to get lost on anyone. This is not an attempt in any respect at all to like shut things down or stop things from happening. It's quite the opposite. One of the best things that a community can do to, from an economic development perspective, is to make clear regulations, because clear regulations send a message as to, you know, if it's a clear process, if it's easy to follow, if it's readable, then a developer looks at that or a property owner looks at that, they can understand what's allowed and not allowed, and they have a clear path forward. Your zoning ordinance is not doing that. And our, this is, the, the major focus is to clean that up. The secondary focus is also to make sure that you are promoting the right uses in the right places at reasonable standards that are actually beneficial to the property owner and also protective to the town. So we're trying to strike that balance throughout this entire process.
Which I think is an important issue. I think, you know, when, when they say Tivonin is un-business friendly, and I think part of the problem is that we don't have that clear-cut process to, right? I mean, I'm all about regulating larger developments, big developments, to the criteria that we want. I'm not saying stop them, but I'm saying to a clean-cut criteria and a process, I think is very important. And I just, a lot of the R stuff, I just don't like taking property away from or people's uses on their property. That's, that's what I'm about. But again, that's all I have to say. I thank you for all your work and hopefully we can find some of this stuff out.
So Counselor Cimino, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a guess and, or, or I'm going to make a wager, that by the end of this new council's two-year term, you guys are going to be the best-informed land use and zoning council, potentially in the history of Tivonin. Because basically, you can expect probably about every six weeks, you are going, it, it won't be this big. This one is big because of a snafu that happened. You won't get one that's this enormous. But about every six weeks, you're going to get another tranche of zoning changes. And I under, you know, as I said, I'm being honest, we haven't gotten to the residential stuff, we haven't gotten to the watershed, we haven't gotten to village commercial. The next big block that you're going to get from us, just so you know, is going to be general commercial, highway commercial, and industrial. And some of the things that are N's in there now are going to turn into either P's or turning into P's or S's. We're just going as fast as we can with, you know, what we have, so.
I mean, I'm definitely going to try to get, maybe try to get to some of your meetings, but I just want to be informed.
I mean, zoning is incredibly technical, and zoning language is not grammatically correct. It's not easy to read.
It's very difficult to understand.
It's hard to interpret. There's no question about any of that. So if I can do anything to help you, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. I will go over this with any public member, council member, commission member, you know, whatever I can do to help clarify.
And to your point, that's why it's tough for me to understand this in two weeks to make a major decision going forward, so.
This is step one of restarting that engine. As my friend, Mr. Grohl likes to say, we have to walk, what you're saying about walking in the shoes?
You got to walk a mile in the shoes?
Yes.
You made that up yourself.
Thank you.
It's crawl, walk, run, for sure.
Walk in the shoes.
Counselor Perry.
What is it?
We'll talk.
You are brilliant, Mr. Grohl.
It was brilliant, but don't ever remember.
Dave Perry Brambleway, when I was on the first council, I never received one phone call. On this council, in a month, I received four phone calls, all on planning. So that was good. And, you know, if we're going to be the first council that knows about planning, that'll be great, because I don't think any other council knew anything about planning. This phone call, Craig covered one of my phone calls, so that was, that takes care of that one. This person called me on plot 409.
We can look it up.
I don't have it in front of me, so I'm sorry.
Number 409?
Yeah, lots, 105, 103, 105, and 153. I guess they went from R120 to waterfront, and they want to know why. I said, you're asking the wrong person, but I'll find out.
Okay, so we can pull the lots up?
Lots 103, 105, and 153.
Yeah.
Went from R120 to waterfront. They couldn't be here today, so they asked me to represent them.
Okay, don't. So.
It's antique shop.
It's drapes, it's white wine.
Okay, so those lots now are commercial. One of them is the white, what? No?
It's the existing nonconforming.
Where?
Those Don's Marine antiques.
The antique store? Right, okay. So those lots now have commercial uses on them, right? One of them is the White Wine Plaza where Helga's Ice Cream is and the liquor store, that's one of them.
It's this one here.
One of them is Don's Marine.
Okay.
And the other one is a property, it's a little bit mixed use. It has, it has a house in the back, but the little, the antique store is in the front. The folks from the antique store did come to one of our meetings and ask, because they were concerned, they wanted to make sure they could still have their business there, and we said, yes, actually, this will help them. So essentially, these are three lots right now that all have really established commercial businesses on them, and, you know, and their waterfront uses. So Ashley, the one that you're highlighting at the top is the one with the antique store in the front. The owners didn't, they didn't seem to have an objection when they came to our meeting. Their main concern was to be able to keep that commercial use. And then you see the White Wine Plaza.
Correct.
And then that's Don's Marine. And the feeling was that, again, based, to Ashley's point earlier, not just based on what's there now, but whether the other uses that are allowed could work in the future there, that those lots could be appropriately and safely moved into the waterfront. So they wouldn't be nonconforming anymore. Now they'll all be conforming uses, because all those uses are allowed, so they won't be nonconforming uses anymore. And they lend themselves that the other waterfront uses could exist there in the future if somebody decided to change them.
The other thing I just want to add to that is that the discussion was as well that this is like a little pocket, like there's a little cluster here of a couple of lots that are commercially used, and we can kind of give them the, you know, the commercial zoning in a, in a grouping of a, you know, of a handful. And that was part of the, that was one of the very important things that we looked for when we went through here. And as, you know, we put in the slide presentation, these kind of pockets of, of development areas. So when there were, you know, uses that were not, that were not conforming, or they were residentially zoned and being used commercially, and there was a grouping of them, we kind of saw an opportunity there to create a cluster.
Right. With the consideration that if any of those owners, once they became waterfront and they'd have that commercial status, if any of the owners ever chose to sell them, could the other allowed waterfront uses go there and, and fit? And the answer was pretty much yes. They, they, they would fit there.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, is somebody opposed to it or worried about it or?
I was.
Rosemary is?
I was. I spoke about my piece about, there's no infrastructure there, there's no water, there's no septic, it's south, and they're pre-existing nonconforming. Because of the lack of enforcement, they were allowed to expand in there. I mean, there was a fruit stand that went, was ablaze, and they got a variance, and we have all those uses, and I'm still opposed. And I quoted the comprehensive plan that night, I didn't bring it with me. Didn't fit, but that's up to the council.
Okay.
But the key takeaways here is that the existing uses are still allowed in the new W2. It brings a unified sort of cohesiveness to the area. And number three, it affords additional potential commercial uses that would be allowed within the W2. So it offers additional flexibility in addition to what's there.
Additional, yes, but I mean, it's an expansion of what's there. It legitimizes what's there, really, which was pre-existing. And again, there's no water and there's no sewage, and it's, it's close to CRIC's controls.
Talking about the antique shop, right? We got to stick with our, we got to stick with our questions format here.
So just, so if that antique shop moved out?
Yep.
Grandfather goes away?
No.
Can we still put another antique shop there?
So because that, well, first of all, if the antique shop moved out, if the zone didn't change.
Okay.
And the antique shop moved out, that would be grandfathered. So if somebody bought it and said, I'm going to have, I'm keeping my own antique shop, that could keep going. If it moves to waterfront, then, and somebody buys it-
Have more uses.
They can have an antique shop, or maybe they want to have one of the other uses that is allowed. Now they could do that there.
There's also a house there that's not habitable.
We're not, our boating's done, we've got to stick with questions. You can speak to the council meeting anytime you like.
All right, thank you for all your hard work.
More questions?
I'm going to go back to, I know we've had discussions about-
Is anyone else have a question?
Hang on a second. Jamie, Jamie, hold on one second. Does, I want to make sure everybody gets a turn. So if somebody who hasn't had a turn to ask a question, Mr. Lacks, come on up.
So let's just say hypothetically, I sell my oil company, so I get changed from general commercial to waterfront two.
Yep.
Petro contacts me, they want to buy my oil company. I sell the property to Petro.
Yep.
Is the oil company still grandfathered in?
Yes.
The use is.
Yeah.
It's not who owns it.
It's not who owns it.
Zoning, zoning regulates uses and properties, not who.
Going back to when I was in front of you guys on November 12th, Ashley stated, and I don't remember the exact terminology, that you guys are recommended from the state line to Nanook Bridge, based on, not the comprehensive plan, what was it?
In the comprehensive plan, yeah.
So who had the authority just to continue to wherever and do spot zoning?
So, well, we would argue it's not spot zoning, we don't, but we do not believe-
Whatever we want to call it.
But, but it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily authority, right, that's granted by the state. The comprehensive plan is a guide plan, but you are allowed to change your comprehensive plan, as Ashley said, up to four times a year. plan, as Ashley said, up to four times a year. You can change it. So you have the opportunity to say, okay, you know, are we doing something that's, that is completely opposed in the, in the comprehensive plan that says, "Don't ever do this?" No, we're not. But you do have the opportunity to look at things that are different, even if they're not specifically mentioned, because the comprehensive plan gets done once every 10 years. Life changes, zoning laws change, the state changes laws, conditions on the ground change. So you are allowed to look at other things as part of that up to four times a year change. And, you know, this is, this is a lot of zoning stuff, but we did look at that sort of area and said, "Look, we've got, you know, we've got these two general commercial parcels down here, we have these commercial, we've got the White Wine Plaza, you've got Don's Marine, you've got this." Like, while we're doing this, it makes sense to look at that. So that's why we did it. But we're allowed to.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, you see, Mr. Lach Senior, hold on.
You need to...
Mr. Lach Senior, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. See, what you're trying to do, you're trying to do two things here. You're trying to use the word "uniformity," but then again, some of the parcels that you're targeting, which happens to be my son's property, it doesn't meet your criteria. So you're in the middle here, you know, being water access, and I got a whole bunch of stuff here, walking distance and this and that, you know? And you're taking away someone's livelihood, granted. And I think Donnie Helger's place, that's a good idea, you know, because he's in that R-zone. But the places across the street are in the same boat. It doesn't, it doesn't meet that criteria about being on the water. Hold on. And you made, Pat, you made a very important point about moving, you're trying to expand general commercial. Well, you're not expanding when you're taking away those two little parcels. The town needs that. You're going to take them away, and you stated you're going to put them somewhere else. Where is someone else? In the southern part of Tiverton? I live in the southern part of Tiverton. Fat chance that'll happen, right? I know what the theory behind that statement means. It means that, yeah, let's push it to North Tiverton some more. That's the consensus of a lot of people in this town lately. So that's how I feel about the whole situation. I was a very dedicated person. I was on a budget committee here years ago, I was a volunteer. I swore I would never, never, never step up to this podium again. But, you know, this plan, you know, hurting the small businessman, you know, you're handcuffing him. And that's probably all I have to say, that I really don't want to say anymore. But, you know, this thing really got my goat. Now, we worked really, really hard on that piece of property 15 years ago, and when you drive by it and you look up at that historic house, it looks really, really nice, you know? And it added to this community. And by taking away his ability, right, to extend his plans in the future, it hurts. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to that point, first of all, as we have repeatedly said, any existing legal business that's there, whatever the use is, is grandfathered and can stay there grandfathered in perpetuity, number one. Number two, any business can ask for additional relief as well, under Unified Development Review. So if a business needs to expand, and they can make a case that it's not going to upset, you know, it's not going to be a nuisance to the neighbors, or it, and, or it's not going to create an environmental, you know, issue, that is an option. There's certainly no desire to push any of the pre-existing, nonconforming businesses out of where they are, by any stretch of the imagination at all, ever. And you are, again, as we've said before, more than welcome to make your case in front of the council. But the intent is not to hurt any small businesses, the intent is, the intent is really to find a way to expand the commercial base. I would argue that, I mean, I don't know about me, I can't say for sure with the owners, but if I owned the White Wine Hill Plaza across the street, which is right now a nonconforming business, because it's zoned residential, I would be happy to be moved into the waterfront. The other thing about the waterfront is, it's not just the properties that's on the water, it's sort of a, it's the properties that are on the water and, you know, and a bit across the street. But I do encourage you to make your case in front of the council. Jamie, before you speak, is there anybody else?
I never got to respond. I never got to dialogue.
Stop, Jamie.
We're still responding.
So I'd like to talk to you guys, because I'm not, I'm not sure what your business use would be classified as, and I'm not certain that you're necessarily losing anything. I think we should have...
That's actually what I want to do down the road. That's where I don't like being back in the corner. Which, you're giving the waterfront two, where you can do this and this, who's going to build power boards? Who's going to make sales? You're baiting it like it sounds so good, like we can do all this stuff, when you're like, "Ha-ha." Realistically, come on.
But have you had a conversation with the town about what use you'd be classified as now, under this, and what plans for the future might be classified under, to look at whether or not you would lose your rights? Because I think that's an important conversation to have, and the town can have, we can talk about that.
We can have with them. I have prior history with the town, with seasonists operating on a residential property.
Well, you and I don't have any prior history, and I'm not here for personal...
I did what was right back in 2010, bought that to become legal. And now it's like, no, now you're stripping my general commercial, to try to give me waterfront two, which I'm not even near the water. How about Don Helger's property, Allen Selfies Upholstery? You left that alone. You could throw a stone across the main road and hit the water. Why didn't that change to waterfront two? You have a perfect, ideal property that you put blinders on, but you want to take me because you're afraid of next crematory seasons on your couple of farms. That's what you're worried about. It was a golden, this is a golden opportunity to take my general commercial, when I did what was right back in 2010 and bought commercial property, because I was in violation, operating on a 996 powered up residence property. That's what I'm at.
I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Well, we all should be educated then. You should know what you're doing before you go take someone's zoning.
My point to you would not happen back then.
Mr. Lach, could you please just let, could you let Ashley answer?
I'm trying to offer that we would, we could have a conversation about this and hear about your concerns and try to work towards some kind of common ground. That's, that's all I'm offering and telling you. Maybe I could finish. Maybe I could finish. Can I finish?
Sure.
All I'm suggesting is that if you have particular concerns, the, my recommendation to you is to sit with the town, and I'm making the offer to you to have that conversation about what, what you might fall, how you might fall into this use table, looking at future plans, like, I'm just making the offer to you, and I...
And I appreciate that.
My point about, my point about history is, that's not what's driving me. So that's not, and I understand that you have a history, and that's personal to you, but my purpose is looking at this from a planning perspective, and to try to help the town, and to try to help residents understand what the town is doing. So I'm making the offer to have that conversation, to see if there's some common ground.
How come that wasn't communicated to me back in November, when all I got on a stew was a thank you?
Okay, Mr. Lach, in all, in all fairness, we, we ask that if people have particular questions, that, you know, these are volunteer boards, and, and I'm sorry, but I, I can't have a conversation where individual board members are, you know, aspersions are cast, you know, based on, on somebody's opinion. So I think we should keep this conversation to the particular technical issues and, and not, and not talk about individual people. I will say this in defense of both this and the zoning update committee, that this is a volunteer group, as is the zoning update committee, that, that, you know, has been working on this for more than 18 months, with individuals putting dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of hours into this work. We try to treat people respectfully, and we just ask that you do, that, that we get the same courtesy back. And one other question, you mentioned, you mentioned, well, you're going to have people make... If you look at the use table for the waterfront zone, it's everything, from office space to, to, you know, personal services businesses, to, to the bank, to a bank, to restaurants, to, it, it's not a tiny amount of little, you know, only little limited waterfront uses. It's a pretty broad use table of a lot of things. But I would highly suggest you take Ashley up on her offer and sit down and have a conversation with her. I think it would be helpful for everybody. And again, as is your right, you know, you are more than welcome to, to, to go in front of the council and make your case. We can't change anything today. But I can assure you that nobody, nobody looked at any individual property and said, "Oh, we got to take that away from..." That's not how this worked. It really was not how it worked. It really was about, how do we figure out how to generate more commercial property tax for the town, and look at the waterfront, which is an underused asset, and figure out how to do it? And, and one of the fundamental principles of zoning is to create a unified, simple zone where people can be assured if they invest, that the uses that are going to, new uses that are going to come in, not the pre-existing ones that are already there, they're grandfathered, are going to be compatible with whatever they want to develop. That's the whole goal, not about, you know, trying to prevent anybody's right to do anything. Truly, that is the case.
Isn't this where we should have began, though?
Jamie, you don't, you don't have the floor yet. Mr. Lach, because I want to give Mr. Lach an opportunity, if he has a last statement he would like to make.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate the input. Again, before Jamie has another turn, does anybody...
I didn't have, I'm just going back. I never had dialogue on the original.
Jamie, 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 please, Jamie, please, you don't have the floor yet, you just need to wait a second. Does anybody else have a question that, that hasn't had a turn to speak?
But I haven't had dialogue on the original.
Jamie, you're not entitled to dialogue. Jamie, please sit down. We said everybody gets a turn.
But I didn't, we never had dialogue.
But we're going to come back to you, Jamie.
We're going to come back to you.
Soon as we get everyone out of first.
So please sit down and let, and let other people have a chance to...
They're not coming back to me, we're just continuing the original...
Jamie, you're out of order. We're talking over us. Please sit down and let everybody else have a turn. I think this gentleman had his hand up.
My name's Joe Ronsey. I own 777 Main Road. It's Connet River Outfitters. So you guys have said multiple times that everything is going to be grandfathered. If I decided to sell, at some point, if somebody wanted to come in and continue the same business, they could do that, correct?
Yes. But you're on Main Road?
Yes.
Are you zoned, what, what is your current zoning?
These are the form-based code.
So you're already in a commercial zone?
Right. And you guys are changing that, correct?
No.
You received a notice, sir, because some of the dimensions are changing in the form-based code zone, and their dimensions frankly are less restrictive than what they were before.
Yeah. So your use that you have is not even grandfathered, it's just permitted by right. And all the other uses in that zone, in that form-based code are, that are listed, are all permitted by right.
Okay.
So you could sell it to somebody who wants to open any of those other uses that are there, and they'd be allowed to do that.
But if they wanted to keep what I was doing there, they can do that?
Yeah. It's not even being grandfathered, it's just permitted, it's just, you know...
Then my next question is, I've heard you referred to more business taxes. What is this going to do if you change?
So this, this doesn't have anything to do with raising business taxes at all, it has to do with Tiverton, right? The bulk of the, of the property taxes come from residential property owners, right? And we're trying to get a better balance. It has nothing to do with the rate or raising anybody's taxes, we have no control or purview about that.
Yeah. It has to do with opportunity.
Yeah, it has to do with opportunity.
Just trying to generate more opportunity for more business development.
Right. Because that would help us with our overall budget.
So there's no restrictions, there's no more, your taxes aren't going up anymore?
We're not in charge, we're not in charge of that, but...
That's a council action.
But there's no, but I have not, you could ask the counselors that are here, but I have never heard one iota of discussion amongst the council about that.
And nothing from the zoning revision committee or the planning board that has to do with taxation has been recommended to the council. So if that would be entirely a council issue, if it were one, we're not aware of anything.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll be good.
All right.
Please?
Janice Van Amerson. I actually own, along with my mother, a property at 24 Kearns Avenue. She has a house that she's living on currently, but there's an unimproved lot next to her. And what I'm trying to, she's gotten all the notices, and what I want to make sure of is that that unimproved lot that's next to her, which I think is going to be a nonconforming size, if I had to guess. So that's where she's currently living. You can see there's a lot just to the left there, just to the west, that is unimproved. I just want to make sure, from everything I'm reading, it sounds like there's no change to that, it can still be sold as a, a separate lot, as it's currently deeded, and would still allow for the building of a, of a single-family home by whatever the codes were of the time. I just want to confirm that that is true, that the merger or nothing else is needed.
The only change to the merger provision is to grandfather in those lots, which became nonconforming as of June 24, 2024, when the town council adopted R120 zoning. And it would similarly grandfather in those lots, that may change dimensionally because of these, these amendments. But it'd be very difficult for me to tell you one way or the other.
I'm going to say that technically, they're different owners.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Then you're fine.
Well, they, they're...
They're listed, this one is listed as Janice et al. with Leonora on it.
As a life estate, yeah.
And this one has a, whoops, has a different, this has Sharon.
There should be, the way those are...
Well, at least what this is showing me, it may not show me everything, but the difference...
Okay, the ownership is, should be the same between the two of them, but I will get back and look at that. They, they should be owners that might have been quite claimed deeds that happened after maybe what you're seeing, but the ownership should be the same between them. So let's assume for a second that the ownership was the same for both of those, as I think it actually is. Would that make a difference and require this to be merged? That's really my question.
No.
The changes that we're proposing today, I don't think will cause it to merge. If it merged previously, that's a different issue.
It hasn't merged previously, they're two separate...
It may have merged.
They have to be thinking.
Oh, they both have to be making any...
They both have, both lots have to be thinking.
That's what I'm saying. Everything I read basically said it had to be two or more unimproved lots, right?
Yes. So because one of them has a home, they don't qualify.
Okay. But you can imagine, I just wanted to confirm that, because when your 96-year-old mother is reading a notice she's gotten in the mail and thinking that she's not going to be able to sell a property that, in the current way...
Her lot is developed, and the other lot is not, and it's not subject to the merger provision.
And there's no, that unimproved lot could be still sold as a building lot, it's just not conforming by certain standards.
Yeah, and it, the changes here don't affect the fact that it was nonconforming before this zoning.
Okay. So really, this would have only been the stuff we're reading that is only related to the mergers of the lots, not necessarily the nonconforming part.
Yes. And the reason she got notified is because she's within the notice distance of the, of this district over here.
Okay.
She hit, she, they hit the notice radius with her because of the changes here, not specifically because they're changing her zoning.
Right. And I always consider that to be more of the, the area that you're highlighting is more of that commercial area.
That's main road, right. The main road district, there's changes proposed for that, and when there's changes proposed in those parcels, it's a 200-foot radius. So she got hit with the radius only for that reason.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Well, one thing, and Todd mentioned this earlier, that actually, that of the few changes the state made that actually benefit people, is that because that lot is not conforming by dimension, in terms of selling it, you automatically get a proportional relief of the setback. So, so that actually makes that lot easier to sell and for somebody to build on.
Great. It's good to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Three minutes, please, okay?
Yeah, like everyone else had the three minutes.
Jamie, we're not going to debate with you.
Okay. So in 13, use table, section 13, you said it only, it only includes manufacturing. But if you actually look at it, it does say manufacturing, storing, processing, and fabrication, which will all be by right industrial use. If, if the industry is so unimportant in the waterfront district, why are we having by right industry? Because the, the uses that you had mentioned that could happen are actually commercial Because the uses that you had mentioned that could happen are actually commercial uses, whereas the true industry, as in processing, manufacturing, they are industry. If you don't want, it's like you keep ignoring that industrial use. Second, you don't want the yacht club to be spot-zoned, but the Hicks property is getting split-zone, spot-zone, and landlocked, and it's changing wetlands to industry. It says in the Mount Hope Bay buffer, watershed buffer, not the town buffer, which relates to development and rain gardens. It says very specifically in the Mount Hope Bay watershed plan that you were to keep and respect the wetlands. You're supposed to develop open space of areas within the Mount Hope Bay buffer watershed. You're changing open lands and wetlands to by right industry. You can say "commercial" all you want, but as long as it says "industry", it says "industry", why is Grinnell's getting changed to Waterfront 2 with by right industry? You said it another time, it was because it didn't fit into a definition, but you wrote the definitions. So if it doesn't fit into the definitions, it's because you left it out. You talk about unintended consequences in the future. Well, what happens when our waterfront is zoned "industry"? There could be unintended consequences that you're not looking at, couldn't there be? It's a question of, you didn't pull up the proper plan when you were addressing the lid. And why is there, and I've brought this up before, why is in the Use Table, there's a 13, which is industrial uses, and 13A is manufacturing, processing, fabrication, and storing? But then there's a 13A, which is cannabis. And then there's a 13AA, so when you say 13A, are you talking about industry? Are you talking about cannabis?
Jamie, Jamie, okay.
We'll fix that.
All right, we're gonna answer your questions. So you have two, three minutes, so would you please take a seat so we can answer your questions? Jamie, please. I'm asking you, because historically, we have a tough time answering your questions when you're at the podium. So I'm asking you nicely to please take a seat.
No, 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 I have to.
Well, because, all right, I'm gonna give this a try, but if this turns into a debate, I'm gonna ask you to please sit down. So first of all, you keep saying by right industry, and we keep telling you, there is no use in this anywhere that says "industry". It's a category of uses, just like residential uses is a category. Then it has specific uses under that, right? There's no use that says just residential, it's either your single-family home or a two-family, or whatever it is. There's no use called "industry" in this table anywhere.
13.
Jamie, please, it's the, it's a category, it's a heading. Jamie, it's the category.
Cannabis uses.
No, 13, cannabis uses, but look at the 13. Go back to 13, and look at, go down to 13A. And what is that little A underneath that gray?
Okay, so for everyone's benefit, Section 13.
And then what does it need that?
Jamie, let go.
I can't talk if you're talking over me. Section 13, industrial uses. Use A, 13A, manufacturing, storing, processing, fabricating activities in conformance with Article 13. Section 13B, product assembly, including, but not limited to, electronic items, computers, optical goods and instruments, laboratory and scientific instruments, watches and clocks, games and toys, and advertising displays. And then Section 13C, municipal recycling center.
Can I finish that? Because I'm gonna read now the Article 13 reference that says, "Manufacturing, storing, processing, fabricating activities in conformance with Article 13. In the Waterfront 1 and industrial zones, the aggregate footprint of all structures may be no greater than 40,000 square feet. In Waterfront 2, the aggregate footprint of all structures may be no greater than 10,000 square feet. The open lot storage area must be clearly defined on the site plans to ensure compliance with zoning regulations and proper site organization. Storage of items outside of the fenced area is prohibited. Open lot storage area shall not be used for parking purposes or to meet minimum parking requirements. In the waterfront zones, the use is restricted to marine-related manufacturing, storing, processing, and fabricating. Fences or walls along the front or corner lot lines must be set back to a minimum of 30 feet from the property line. When chain-link fences use, trubs with a minimum height of five feet shall be planted every 10 feet on center along the fence line or wall to enhance visual screening. When adjacent to residential use or structure, deliveries made by any vehicle over two axles shall be confined to the hours of 7 and 9." So the blanket statement that "industry" is permitted on the waterfront is false. It is not.
Then why is it by?
Industry is not a use, and anything that falls under 13A has to conform with those performance standards. And if it is on the waterfront in 1 or 2, it must be marine-related. So the notion that battery storage and production is happening in the waterfront is false. It's not true, the zoning ordinance does not support that claim.
Say no, Ms. French, one minute.
Wait, no, no, but Jamie...
Other people dialogue, they have a question.
Jamie, no, no, you, Jamie...
Why is it 10,000 square feet and 40,000 square feet?
Jamie, please, listen.
There's discrepancy.
I'm going to have to take a recess, because we can't answer the litany of questions that you just asked.
Is there a definition?
You just asked a whole batch of questions. We're trying to answer them for the benefit of you and anybody that's watching, but you won't let us answer them. That is why I asked you to please be seated. So either we're gonna try and answer your questions, or I'm gonna have to go into recess, so that you will have to sit down, and then we'll reconvene the meeting. Do we really have to do this again? So I would like to add, I would like to let Ashley finish her statement, please.
The other thing that needs to be kept in mind, because I hear the question coming, do you have a definition for marine-related uses? The zoning official, who is an employee of the town, has the authority to interpret the zoning ordinance, not the applicant, not the property owner, the zoning official. So the authority to interpret the zoning ordinance rests with the town. They make a determination as to what consists of a marine-related use, not the applicant.
I need to make one point. It's been lost or skipped over by some people. In the waterfront zone, as it currently exists, manufacturing, storing, processing is a conditionally permitted use already. Prior to January 1, 2024, it's permitted by special use permit.
Special use.
Yeah.
So now it will be planned by right?
No, Ms. French, I'm still speaking. Now because the state has created this situation where we have to have specific and objective criteria, or the use is going to be permitted by right, the town has tried to balance two things, both developing business and protecting the town by creating these very specific criteria that would not necessarily have otherwise existed. Furthermore, this use would have to go through planning board approval, either as a development plan review project, or minor, or major land development project. So it's still going to be reviewed by the town. So don't forget that. And the planning board has authority pursuant to state law to impose other conditions and ask for a whole bunch of information, as long as it's related to the use in that parcel.
Now, why do we want industry on our waterfront? Is that, does that, it says in the buffer, and it says in the comp plan, that was supposed to be doing quality of life.
Jamie, we keep telling you, we keep telling you, industry is not a use. We are, we have determined, and as Todd said, before we, before this, the waterfront allowed it before. I mean, this isn't new, the waterfront. Excuse me, I'm speaking, the waterfront allowed it before. Now we actually have more, please don't shake your head no. You can look at the old Use Table where it was...
It had special use permit before.
Which means conditionally permitted.
Which means...
It's still a permitted use. Just because there's a designation of a special use permit does not mean it's not a permitted use, it's conditionally permitted. It means you have to meet certain standards. What we've done, because of what the General Assembly did with special use permits, is create a new way to do that, which is to say that it's permitted, but there are a bunch of standards that you have to meet in order to achieve that use, in addition to the fact that you have to come to the planning board, go through a development process, in which the planning board can impose additional conditions on you. The problem with the special use permit process now is that if it didn't end up under the list of specific and objective criteria, and they came before the planning board, we can't add to the list. So we're missing things, because there's no way that you can think of every circumstance that you want to impose on a use. So in our opinion, using a permitted use with performance standards is a better mechanism than special use permits under the current law, which has rendered them not that useful.
Women, I have something to say. Jamie, if you really feel this strongly, to you, we've answered all your questions on the industry. I suggest, I suggest that you speak in front, that you go to the council and make your case that you have a problem with someone having a sailmaker business or a custom boat cover business on the water. To your point about the wetlands, regardless of what we do, we do not, local zoning does not and never has overwritten DEM's wetlands regulations or CRMC's regulations. We don't look at lots and say, oh, well, they have too many wetlands on that, so we're... That's not how it works. We do the zoning by lot, but all those DEM regulations still apply. So if there's too much wetlands on the lot for you to build to do the thing you want to do, DEM's gonna say, you can't do that, because you don't have enough room for it. This is the room you have on the lot, so you've got to build some, you know, something that's in the Use Table that fits there. We do not ever override DEM's wetlands regulations, nor do we override CRMC regulations. They are all still in place.
Could you please put the Mount Hope Bay watershed buffer into the comprehensive plan and into the zoning? Is the non, the other watershed plans are listed in it, but the Mount Hope Bay is not listed. It is a TIBRIDAN document, and it says in it very specifically that in this buffer area, we have to develop, to protect our wetlands, and to develop open space.
Okay, we're, let's answer that.
I mean, often, the town, we can do things like, we can make reference to certain outside documents. Again, I don't know exactly what, I mean, we can certainly look at opportunities to make references to the document. Again, I don't believe that anything that we're doing here today or proposing conflicts with that document. So certainly, the board can look at ways to incorporate it. But again, it's not a regulatory document. It doesn't impose anything on the town in terms of regulating what you can and can't do. There are very few instances where the state gets involved in dictating what a town can do for uses in their zoning. This is not one of them. But I don't think the planning board is opposed to, you know, looking at the document and finding ways to incorporate some of its recommendations, but it's, they're not, they're not equivalent to making changes to zoning districts or use allowances. It's about site design and managing, you know, stormwater, and ensuring that we're properly regulating for those purposes. So I'll say, I'm sure the planning board would be happy to look at the document and find ways to incorporate, you know, reference to it. But I don't, I don't believe that there's anything in there that would affect a zoning change.
And why is Grinnell's part of this parcel? Why has Grinnell's not been removed and put into municipal? Why is it going to be by right commercial and industry?
There's no such thing as a municipal zone, there's no...
Then why not? You like the zones, you develop a waterfront zone, why can't you develop a municipal zone?
Jamie, 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 thank you for your opinion. I have never seen a piece of zoning code anywhere where there's something like, where all the municipal properties are put in a municipal zone. They're in the zones that they're in.
Then it could be open space.
Jamie, Jamie, thank you for your opinion. I think we've answered the questions that you mentioned.
Some of them.
And Jamie, I know we could stay here until 3:30 doing this, but, you know... But then we probably still wouldn't convince you. Last call, any last questions, or anybody? Counselor Comito, he's got one?
The industrial definition that we just read, is there a, I can't see it in here, is there like a general commercial description to?
So what, Ashley, what was the performance standard?
Is there one for general commercial or no?
It depends on the use.
It's use by use, it's not zone by zone, so it depends on the actual use. What we did in here is, there's a notes line. That note sends you either to the performance standard section that has the use by use list, or it sends you to the special use permit section that has the specific and objective criteria for that use. So you can tell what has what by looking in that note table.
Right, and to answer the next question that's coming, and I know this...
This is gonna be amazing.
She has the crystal ball over here, sir.
We haven't finished, we haven't brought you yet the general commercial zone, right? So we haven't finished looking at that use in the general commercial zone, and does that need...
We've done some.
We've done some.
So I would just refer into what she was just saying, like, if I found something over here, how do I get the definitions and all the criteria on what's, the setbacks they allow, just what you did with industrial, so I'm just trying to...
I'll tell you later, sir.
Oh, great, I'm just trying to figure out how to...
We can help you.
All right.
Not a problem.
It's not easy.
You know what, you want to pull it up? Do you have it?
Actually...
I have it, why don't we show you?
We'll show you, right now, then everybody can learn. Yeah, they are in the zoning table. They should be under Article, but if you don't have them, certainly you should...
All right, so we have here the proposed ordinances, and if we go down... This is the district use table, Counselor?
Yes.
All right, so let's find, do you have a specific use in mind?
No, I would just like, so, if we just pick one, like, so how do I...
All right, mixed-use residential. If you go across there, you see that's permitted in the W1 and W2 zone. But we have a note over here in this column, see Article 6, Section 10. Article 6, Section 10 are the performance standards, so, if I go there...
So that's not necessarily listed for everything that you have in the use chart, is not necessarily listed?
It's not, not every single use has a set of performance standards.
Which is probably most impossible to do, I would assume.
I mean, you could, but some of them, some of them just don't necessarily warrant them. And I will say that, as Tricia has said, there are sections of the Use Table that we haven't, we haven't completely gone through. So we expect that when we do go more, through general commercial more carefully, we may end up with a few more sets of performance standards.
So it's fair to say, this is gonna change again quite a bit, once you're not doing it.
It'll be, it'll be...
Modified, more of a, what Ashley was saying earlier, a process. You might want to do this.
But again, what we did with that Use Table was that it, you went to the Use Table, and it might have said permitted or not permitted, or special use, or whatever, but then there are, there are always other sections of the ordinance that apply. And we were trying to make it easier by, there's a note table now, and it's like, oh, look, there's my cross-reference, I have to go look at this too. So we're trying to simplify and make it clearer for people that there are other pieces of the ordinance that are also going to apply to you, and we're trying to streamline as much as we can and make it clear.
We're making it more user-friendly, I think, at the end of the day.
And to be fair, there's a lot of zoning ordinances that are in the same condition, but you end up with a bit of a Frankenstein, when you kind of like patch, you know, here and there, you add a section, or you change a section, or you take a section away, and you do that for 20 years, and the next thing you know, there's all these internal inconsistencies that don't speak to each other or conflict directly with each other, and then what do you do? And so we're trying to clean all that.
So to our use, our example from the district use table was the mixed-use residential, the note to go to Section, Article 6, Section 10. This is, these are the performance criterias for mixed-use residential.
And they refer to different zones. In this zone, it might have this criteria, but in that zone, it might have, you know, flake.
Which, again, we feel like is a better approach than special use permits, just because of the restriction, our hands are really tied under special use permits.
I kind of think it takes out the personalities of it also. Well, if performance is performance, it doesn't really matter what somebody's opinion is, it's a performance issue, I think.
The important thing...
I hope I'm saying that right.
Objective versus subjective, it is then to be very objective, yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm referring to.
I think the important thing about performance standards that differs from the specific and objective criteria under special use permits, and I mentioned this at the council meeting before, somebody comes to the town, and they have a use, and they propose it, and the town is in favor, and the applicant is working with the town, and there is a specific or objective criteria in the ordinance that says that you have to have a 25-foot landscape buffer, and this use cannot meet that, and the town is okay with it, and the applicant has offered mitigating measures to like make it, they can't have a special use permit. We can't waive that standard. Under performance standards, we can go back to having the negotiated discussion of like, you can't do 25 feet, but I can do 15 feet, and I'll put a double row of evergreens, and you won't see on the other side of it, and the planning board can say yes. And the applicant gets their use. We feel like it gives flexibility on both sides.
We're trying.
Great, thank you very much. I mean, it's been an awful lot today, so thanks for, thanks for you.
There's a quiz later. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm telling you, this will be, this will be the most informed zoning council we've ever had. Before we finish, I'd like to ask if there are any of members of the board that would like to add any additional comments, think we missed something, something else that you, message that you think is important to get out, anybody?
Appreciate the three of you taking the heavy lift here this morning, thank you.
Thank you guys for all being here.
Anybody?
And supporting the process.
Stu, PA, anybody? Rosemary?
Just one thing, just color commentary. I really appreciate folks coming out, right, and having the dialogue. This is a participatory process, it is transparent, and I think when people are able to have this sort of discussion and perhaps springboard that into more one-on-one discussions to deep dive into certain concerns, then I think we're doing our job in really helping folks, handhold folks along and create the win-win for all stakeholders, so.
And if I can just add to that, you know, a little plug to, I think people have heard that this, like, this is not, this process is not over, and we would encourage anybody to participate in the planning board meetings on this, the zoning revision committee meetings, when we're all kind of sitting and going through parcel by parcel, we, some members of the public have come and they've given really good input and have, have, you know, have had an impact on what the zoning revision committee has forwarded to the planning board, so we just, again, encourage people to participate in the process.
Yep. All right, in that case, I think we're completed for this morning, everybody.
Go ahead, Rosemary. You don't want to adjourn?
Just leave. 11:20.
All right, Rosemary has officially called the time. We are...